I will call the December Common Council Meeting to order. All members that are here present this evening have reported doing so. Next item on the agenda, item three is a Pledge of Allegiance followed by a Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation, so if you'd please stand.
... pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Move to approve, put them on file.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Opposed, that passes. The next item on the agenda is item number five, the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. I want to welcome all of you in the audience who took the time out of your evening to be here tonight. The speaking procedure is as follows: If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, you will be able to do so following being recognized by myself or a council member. If you're willing, if you're interested in speaking on items related to the Planning Commission, which I know a number of you have expressed wishing to do so, wishes to do so, that we will recognize when that time is appropriate too, so you're not left guessing when that time is appropriate. So with that said, make sure when you do come speak and you are recognized that you do so, announce your name, your address, and make sure you hit the button on the mic, so you're able to be picked up for those watching here tonight at home, from home. All right, item number six, a presentation by Encouraged Community Foundation regarding the old Tribune Building. We had a request a number of weeks ago to speak to the council as a whole, as an update on the former daily Tribune building project, and at this time I wish to invite whoever is willing to speak to us this evening to come to the podium, and again, make sure you hit the push-button, mic, and introduce yourselves, so that way we know who is speaking. Kristi, can you use the microphone at the podium, just so Colton and back can pick it up? Thank you.
Yes, I can. So thank you so much for having us. We are really, really excited to be here, just to share a brief update about the work that's been done over the past few months around the former daily Tribune building. Very quickly, my name is Kristi Anderson, I'm one of the project managers on this project. I am joined today with Steve Grant, Galen Rigenbach, Kyle Swanson, and Karen Gennazi. We are all part of the project team, and again, really, really glad to be here. So just a quick overview, we purchased the building in December of 2012, so just over a year ago, and we knew that we wanted to purchase the building to let the community decide really what it might become. We weren't exactly sure what that process would look like, so we went looking for national examples of people who have created multi-use spaces and sort of resident-led design projects nationwide, and discovered a design group, Concordia, out of New Orleans, and contracted with them to help us sort of figure out what a resident-led engagement process might look like around construction and adaptive reuse. So they came in, and upon their suggestion, we went out looking for community members who might want to join our team, and that's how we've had the pleasure to work with Steve and Galen and Kyle and two other community members. The Community Fellows' goal is to bring as many people into this process as possible, and to date, we have had over 300 people attend community meetings and even more attend tours or show their support via email or Facebook or Twitter or any other engagement opportunities. So we're thrilled with that, and it's thanks to the work of these folks here. Many people who have attended our meetings are actually in the room with us today, so thank you to anyone who is in the audience who has joined us at a meeting, this is their work, the work of the community members who have been attending these meetings. That's why this process has been able to be such a success, excuse me. So after hiring the Community Fellows in about August, September, we hosted our first public meeting in October, and I know that some of you may have seen updates about that, be it on our website or via email, and so I'm actually going to hand it over to Steve and Galen and Kyle, and they are going to share very briefly about what's happened at the meetings, how many people have attended those meetings, and what the activities looked like, and how people have been helping out.
Okay, thanks, Kristi. Glad to be here, just gonna give you an update on what happened at the first meeting, which occurred on October 8th. And really, the objective for that first meeting was, number one, to make sure everybody had kind of a common understanding of, first off, what are assets and the great things that we have in Southwood County that exist today, and also to start thinking about some things maybe that we're missing that might end up in the Tribune Building at some point down the road. So to do that, we worked in small groups, tables of about eight to 10 people, and each table had an asset map that they were working on, and those assets were divided into eight or six categories: Physical assets, social assets, educational, cultural, economic, and organizational. So each table was tasked to work on one of those categories. For example, my table, our asset that we worked on was the physical asset, so those were things like our natural resources, our parks, our recreation areas, the river, of course, our infrastructure such as our highways and bridges and communications, that was our target. So we reviewed those maps and the lists of assets that are existing today, and then looked for missing pieces to make sure that that was up to date. And I think it was a good process, because a lot of folks, even in our table, mentioned, you know, "I never knew we had a state natural area," for example, "out by Pittsfield." So I think it was a good exercise to get some common ground to start from. And then the bulk of the meeting then was a brainstorming activity that you're probably all familiar with, the Post-it note type of an activity, and the goal of that was to come up with as many ideas for the possible future uses of the Tribune Building and the area around the building. So anything was fair game, we were hoping for lots of ideas, but we also, at our tables, organized those ideas a couple ways. One was whether or not an idea was brand-new to the area, something we were missing in the community, or whether or not an idea was maybe a duplicate, or there's an existing idea out there or something in the community that this new idea could maybe partner with to improve or what have you. So that was one way we organized the ideas, and the others were based on whether or not an idea would be a full-time, year-round use of the Tribune Building, or perhaps just a part-time use, like a seasonal or a weekend type of use. So our outcomes, I guess I'm supposed to be hitting this, aren't I?
Yep, just click on the left one.
Okay. Okay. So I skipped a slide there, but the outcomes of from that first meeting, first off, we had a great attendance, 210 people came, that far exceeded what we were hoping for. We had a lot of enthusiasm in the group, and as you can tell, we supported the paper industry that night with almost 1,000 Post-it notes being generated with ideas, but as you can imagine, a lot of those Post-it notes had very common themes and ideas, so we could break those down or whittle that down to about 168 unique ideas for the use of the Tribune Building. You could further break that down into 12 major categories, things like a commercial kitchen, for example, or recreational rentals, were some of those major categories. So the graphic up there just is meant to show some of those, I think 170 ideas around the outside, but then all the connections that a lot of those ideas had to other things that people came up with and other ideas. So there was great connection, I guess, and some good sharing of ideas. So I'm gonna pass it over to Galen now to give you the next update.
Good evening. My name is Galen Rigenbach, and I am one of the five Community Fellows, and very honored to be part of this process and meeting so many great people in Wisconsin Rapids and the surrounding area. The second meeting was actually held on November 12th, and it was pretty exciting. What we did is, what they did prior to the meeting is they gathered all of those Post-it notes, and they put them together, and they came up with those statistics, how many people showed up, how many Post-it notes, how many unique ideas shared, and the major categories. And we presented those to, at the meeting, at the beginning, and then we started moving into another couple of activities. And the overall meeting goal was to move from what do I personally think is a great idea, to what would serve our community. So we moved from me to we, and to realize that it's more about, not just about my own personal ideas, but the process about our ideas collectively as a community, and what our community needs are. So the first activity that we did is we actually, I think, there we go, this is actually some diagrams that were posted around the walls, and, well, the first circle one is we looked at all of the different categories, and we started having meaningful conversation about what it is that we could, what those ideas could possibly be. So from 168 unique ideas, thoughts were organized and reviewed based on 12 major categories, and we briefly considered every idea presented at all the tables from meeting one. And it was pretty exciting, because we started seeing some synergy, and each table had different people with different backgrounds and different things that they wanted, we were starting to see some fusion coming together about, it was becoming more feasible of what could possibly happen at the Tribune Building. And the second activity, what we did is we, as a table, we had 10 votes that we needed to present, or that we needed to post on the wall, on what we felt was most important to our community. And so the outcomes of that, we had 225 residents attend meeting two, there were 281 votes casted on the top 10 ideas, so there was 281 top 10 ideas. They voted on 44 different ideas, we made 200 different connections between those ideas, and came up with eight major categories, and which will lead into what Kyle is going to be presenting about what happened with meeting three and those eight categories.
So meeting three, we got to roll up our sleeves and get to work on December 10th. You can see an example here of one of the sheets we worked from, and our goal there was really to narrow the focus of the ideas. We reviewed all eight major categories, which happened to be a community kitchen, recreation, maker space, flexible gathering space, market, music entertainment, youth and teen, and community information. We did one activity, which we discussed any duplicative ideas that we saw there, considered any potential partners that already existed in the community, and also took into consideration anyone who might be able to take responsibility or kind of run that program. And then one of the most important things from that was to further define and explain each of those categories on there in more detail. So most importantly, this video is about defining these ideas for our community and what they mean to us. So there's just a few more numbers in there, and despite our frigid temperatures we had that evening, there was 160 people who showed up for that one, and it was a lot of work, but it was a lot of great work, and you could see people who are very, very passionate about where we're going with this whole project. So our next thing for you here, we like to do is personally invite you to attend our next meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, January 14th, and that will be held at 5:30 and run until 7:30. Pizza and soda, so you can come out and get a bite to eat, and if you haven't been able to join us at any of the meetings at this point, there's always a review beforehand that will make sure that you're on the same page, and the other attendees are always very happy to kind of bring you up to speed and help you along any information you might be missing. And in the meantime, you can feel free to go on the webpage, which is tribunebuilding.org, and there's a lot of information there posted online, which will be available for your review. I sort of had to summarize over the results of the last meeting, because that's still being compiled, that's still being put together, and a lot of that will be reviewed at the meeting and also available on the website.
We're happy to, our contact information is on the sheets that we handed out, there's an email, a phone number, and our website, just in case anyone would like to reach out and ask us questions. We're happy, you know, if anyone has questions right now, we're happy to answer those, but we know you have a busy meeting as well, so really appreciate you having us.
Council members, are there any questions or comments for the group here regarding the Tribune Building project? All right, doesn't look like we've got anybody wishing to ask any questions. Just for our information, I recognize a number of faces in the audience that have been a part of the process. Can I get a show of hands for those that have been participating in the project thus far? That's fantastic. That's more people that showed up for this than show up when we pass our annual city budget. So I thank you for being here tonight, I thank you for your participation, your ongoing participation in the project. As a believer firsthand in resident-led, resident-engaged processes such as this, I think it's very exciting to see what's happening, and I look forward to attending the January meeting, and we hope we have some attendance by others, maybe on the council if their schedules permit. Other person, Kellogg?
I participated in the second and third session, and I really have to compliment you. It's almost like a happening when you're there, to see all the people, from the youth to the senior citizens, to people from all walks of life, and the energy, and the Encouraged Foundation and the volunteers, all of them helping. It was a process that was really unique, and what's also beneficial is that in the future, in this city, it's a great city, that other opportunities can occur with the same process, and I think it would just enhance and bring everybody together, so I have to thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you for being here, and thank you for attending tonight. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, is the Report of the Planning Commission Meeting Held December 2nd. The Planning Commission met at 5:00 PM on Monday, December 2nd, in the first-floor conference room here at City Hall. All members were present, a list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. The first item on the agenda was the approval of the report from the November 4th. Planning Commission meeting, there was a motion and a second to approve the report, and that motion carried. Item 2A was a request by Stephen Clivine for a street vacation request, in which the applicant was requesting to vacate a portion of Clivine Avenue lying between 14th Place South and 15th Place. Steve Clivine was present for the item, and he proposed to change Clivine Avenue between 14th Place South and 15th Place South to a cul-de-sac west of 15th Place, which would allow one additional lot in a preliminary subdivision plat. Also, there will be reduced street and utility costs, which will mean a lower special assessment charge. Clivine Avenue from 15th Place South to a cul-de-sac west of 15th Place South will be rededicated with the final subdivision plat, in which I would note that that will come back in the form of an ordinance to the council at a future meeting. That was the reason why Mr. Clivine was requesting the vacation request, and there was a motion and a second to approve, and that motion carried. Item three was a request by Miller Valentine Group, which had an annexation request. The applicant is requesting an annexation of 4.45 acres on the northeast corner of A Street South and Witrock Avenue, parcel number 0700846B as in Bravo, 0700850, 0700851, from the town of Grand Rapids. Mike Decus, representing the Miller Valentine Group, was present for this item. This group, on behalf of the owners of Mark Novak, is requesting to annex the subject property into the city from the town of Grand Rapids. Currently, the subject property is vacant, with Two Mile Creek running along the northern boundary. By city ordinance, upon annexation, the property would automatically be rezoned R2, one-family and two-family residential district. The subject property is 4.45 acres, as mentioned, and is located at 3951 8th Street South. There was a motion and a second to recommend approval of the annexation of 4.45 acres on the northeast corner of A Street South and Witrock Avenue from the town of Grand Rapids, and that motion carried. Item four on that agenda was a public hearing on Plan 130802, Miller Valentine Group. The applicant is requesting a rezoning pending annexation approval, which was granted at the previous and is here in front of us tonight, from R2, one-family and two-family residential to B2, general commercial district. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of A Street South and Witrock Avenue within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Public hearing was held on the request from Miller Valentine Group for the rezoning from R2, one-family, two-family, to B2. Speaking against the request were three individuals, Sherry Stotts, 38, 21, 10th Street South, Ross Schultz, 38, 10, 10th Street South, a legal objector, Darrell Butch Fensel, 2611 Griffith Avenue, owner of 4111 A Street South, also a legal objector. Speaking in favor of the request was Mike Decus, representing Miller Valentine Group, on behalf of the owners, Mark Novak, the requester, and Julie Kreitzer, 810 Mile Avenue, part of the group, part owner of the property in question. Item five was action on that plan. Mike Decus, representing Miller Valentine Group, on behalf of the owners, was requesting a rezoning from R2, one-family and two-family residential district to B2, general commercial district. The applicant is requesting to annex the subject property into the city from the town of Grand Rapids. Currently, the subject property is vacant, with Two Mile Creek running along the northern boundary. By city ordinance, upon annexation, the property would automatically be rezoned R2. The applicant is requesting the change in zoning to allow for a planned multifamily residential development with up to 56 units. While the applicant has outlined their intended use for the property, it is important to note that if the requested rezoning is approved, it will allow the property to be utilized in the future for any of the permitted uses found within the B2 district. Subject property is shown as commercial on the comprehensive plan. The commercial land use category identifies areas recommended for commercial development. This would include retail sales, personal and professional services, and offices. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There has not been an established use of the property in the past, and the plan shows the 8th Street corridor as commercial, reflecting its high-traffic numbers and overall trend of development. The 8th Street South corridor has developed as the primary commercial area of the city. After the request, after a request for comments was made, to other city departments, the majority of the concerns or comments received were directed towards the proposed use of the property for multifamily use, rather than the proposed B2 zoning. The primary summary, the fire department noted that there was only one hydrant across State Highway 13 or A Street South, in which the apartments would need fire department connections and will require fire suppression systems by the fire code since they are proposed to be three-story. The engineering department has noted that currently there is no water, sanitary or stormwater laterals to the property. In addition, since the proposed develop is multifamily, the installation of sidewalks on Witrock Avenue will be required. Finally, there will be special assessments for water and sanitary mains, and the third and final from departments, where the planning department noted that the best, that based on, based upon the unit's proximity to Two Mile Creek, there are additional regulations that apply to the subject property. This is the first, the first is the city's floodplain ordinance, the second is the county's shoreland zoning ordinance. Subject property is proposed for annexation from the town of Grand Rapids and is currently vacant. Already read the other consistent language. Based upon the review of this request, staff did recommend approval. There was a motion and a second to recommend approval of the rezoning from R2, one-family and two-family residential, pending annexation to B2, and the motion carried. The meeting was adjourned. Okay, so that is the Report of the Planning Commission Held December 2nd. Recognizing that item eight on the agenda, the next item on the agenda following the report, items 8A and 8B are connected, I would entertain a discussion, and the council would entertain a discussion based on those items. So with that, I would entertain motions, I guess, from the council members. Other person, Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the balance of the report holding out items three, four, and five.
The motion is to approve the report with the exception of items three, four, and five. Is there a second? I'll let Shane get caught up here. We have a motion, is there a second? I guess we have the... We have a motion and a second to approve the report with the balance of, the report with the exception of three, four, and five. Please cast, is there any discussion? I guess moving before that, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, 7As and 0As.
Okay, with the balance of the report, items three, four, and five, which, to remind council members, is the Miller Valentine Group annexation request, the public hearing on that, and then the action on that report. Any discussion, motions? We have a motion by other person, Rayom, to move for adoption. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, now we'll move into discussion. Other person, Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. There's many people here tonight that I'm sure wish to speak on this. I just want to say a couple things quickly, and then I think we can get into the act of recognizing individuals to speak their minds on this thing. I guess personally, I'm a little disappointed in the actions of the commission. In our own, or in the report of the commission, it states, "Subject property is shown as commercial on the comprehensive plan that this council passed. Commercial land use category identifies areas recommended for commercial development, including retail sales, personal and professional development services, and offices." We essentially have a residential building on the table here tonight. The city's been working hard over the last several years, and I don't know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, I can't come up with an exact number, I just know that it's been quite a while, to get homes and residences off of the 8th Street corridor from essentially the expressway on south, with the idea that this is meant to be a commercial business avenue. And it says right in here that this is our, let me try and get the correct words here, the 8th Street South corridor has developed as the primary commercial area of the city. So now we're trying to inject residences into the primary commercial area of the city, the primary commercial corridor. It seems to me that the only reason that we approved this with the, all the information that's in the commission's report, is that we're looking for additional tax base by annexation, and that we are jumping at the carrot of proposed development, without actually considering appropriate land use in a commercial sector. Now, a couple of other things occurred to me that if a residence were to go in here, 56 proposed residences, this will bring, obviously will bring families and will bring children to the area, and into that area. Dave Lasba can attest to the fact that we have been working on the Highway 54 bypass project for how many years? You know, 20 or more, I would guess?
I believe we started in 1995.
Okay. So not quite 20. There was a report at one time that had stated that the congestion levels of 8th Street, as we know it, State Highway 13, are only set to increase to what the report claimed was close to unmanageable levels for the size of avenue that it is, and that the only way to alleviate those concerns was by the Highway 54 bypass, and I don't know, maybe Dave knows this off the top of his head, but I think that report stated that that timeframe was somewhere around the year 2020, so less than 10 years from now.
Well, we haven't updated the traffic, but it was supposed to fail in 2025, according to the model.
2020, okay. So just over 10 years from now. So you're looking at a road that 10 years in the future is going to have so much traffic on it that it can't support, the infrastructure cannot support. With a residence, a large residence here, families and children, you're going to see a demand immediately, or maybe not immediately, but within a few months to a year, of a demand to lower the speed limit on 8th Street, to what would be, they would consider to be a safe and prudent speed. It's 35 miles an hour, it's a state highway, it's a primary access road through our city. Essentially, it's the primary access road through our city, especially from the south. Essentially, it's the primary access road through our city, especially from the south. So now we've got a road that in ten years' time is going to not be able to handle its traffic load, and in two years' time, they're going to want to drop the speed limit on it to backlog it further in a commercial sector on a state highway. And then it's going to come down that that wasn't good enough, now we need traffic actuated signalization there to move the traffic. So now that backlog is going to be further extended. And there has been increased use of Witrock, obviously, as developments have taken place back there, and I have, you know, heard concerns tossed out one time and another over the last few years from time to time about that intersection as it is now without this proposed development project on it. So I just want that to kind of weigh on the minds of the council as we consider this tonight, that this development does not fit with the proposed use of that corridor as this council has seen fit to design it in the past, looking at putting residences in a commercial sector. It's not feasible because of the traffic issues that may not quite be there yet, but they are, it's expected that they're going to come down the line, and something along this line will exacerbate those issues and cause them to come forward much further. And let's face it, we're not going to get any money for a State Highway Fifty-four bypass in the next two years. It's not going to happen. I'd be super surprised if it happened in the next ten years. So I wonder what other areas were looked at within the city or within Grand Rapids? Were there any other areas that were looked at? Why were those areas rejected over this area? And can we revisit those areas? Areas that would be considerably more appropriate in already potentially residential areas or on a road that would not be so heavily impacted as this proposal would impact that area? So I'm going to vote against this tonight, and I would strongly encourage the other members of the council to vote against this action tonight as it's presented, because it's not feasible for the city. The proposal, the residential, I have no issue with. We just need to find a better, more appropriate place for it. Thank you.
Okay. I'd look to Adam Teagan, a member of the staff, and we also have the requestor here this evening. I was informed by Shane that he has a presentation, a couple of slides that he may want to, at which point, Michael, if you want to make that known, so we can give you the opportunity to do so. I would speak to one of the concerns as a member of the planning commission, as the chair of the planning commission. While that, while all the items are connected, they're also separate in the sense that, you know, the first item, item three, is really the annexation request. And my comment would be, if this property will develop today, tomorrow, ten years from now, it will need to be in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. So I would, in my mind, propose, recommend maybe to the council members to consider separating the annexation request from that, only because of the fact that should it need to be developed, they will have to come, somebody will have to come back to this body and propose annexation again for water and sewer, provided they want water and sewer for the development. So that would be my only comment on that. The second piece is the concern raised regarding the consistency with housing on Eighth Street. I think, given the fact that this is B-two, and I'll defer to Adam to speak a little bit more about B-two and why that was the case. The commissioners, there was a consensus, and we also have a council member on the commission who wants to speak next, so we'll give him the opportunity to do so. But I would mention that there was some debate and discussion about the housing component on Eighth Street. And because of the size and the scale of the parcel being almost five acres, there was consistency amongst the members saying that this could be a break from what's developed on Eighth Street in terms of looks and aesthetics and appeal. Right now, or had been wooded and had been a home for many, many years, and there was, based on conversation, we haven't seen any site plan design and such, so it's still out there, was the amount of buffer that would be generated from Eighth Street. So I would just mention those two points, that the commission did discuss that. At which point, all the person Raome, if you'd like to speak to your request, and then I may defer back to Adam to talk more about B-two.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just real quick, and then we can move on. And I think it'd be very beneficial, at least to hear from the developer's standpoint of what is actually there before, you know, get into the, maybe nitty-gritty of what the outcome would be. And part of that, I think, is, comments to come as you speak, Michael, is who's paying for the infrastructure costs and that type of stuff. The traffic volume is there, and I think that, I think needs to be more addressed from Dave and Adam. And also, I think, Mayor, I think the comment you made is, I think the first note that I wrote down here is actually, and a big thing that went around at the commission meeting that evening was of a different look as people came into the, into the city, to present something different than just shopping malls, businesses, and whatnot. And here is something, and this is not, I think we have to keep in mind, is not just a residential development as I think most of us would think about if somebody came and knocked on our door and said about a residential development of a single-family or duplex type of situation going in. And all the details of, for sure, of the, you know, the driveways, to make sure every the entrances, exits, and everything are safe and whatever, all have to be, I guess, totally worked out in the final, the final details, but the developers did have, you know, a good set of a proposed, of what something could look like if this would go through. But I think another thing, Mayor, that you did mention is that sooner or later, for anything to happen, whatever I guess it may be, is basically it's going to have to be annexed into the city. And so where we go from there, I hesitated on our initial vote to hold out these and approve the rest, but I thought, I guess, maybe we got to go through getting the others out of the way and step into the fray here to see where we, where we go with that. I think we had a lot of good discussion at the planning commission meeting that evening. Questions were raised. I think there were probably some, I don't know if it's skeptical or whatever, maybe of what, how it initially, you know, what are we getting or looking at to get into? But I think from, through the presentation and questions that were asked, I think, I think anyway, to the commission's satisfaction that it was a good discussion, and questions were answered to their satisfaction. And I guess also along with in a, you know, if we ever see the Fifty-four bypass, or don't, if we want it, we, along with other communities, are going to have to step up to the plate and totally demand that it happens. And that if we don't, and we say it's just not going to happen, because that's what I hear, then if that's what we want, then you go down the river to Port Edwards and tell them that the bypass is not going to happen. Because that is part of, that is part of the plan, of the bypass. That is part of the bridge, the new bridge being constructed through Port Edwards. So if we want to keep saying it's not going to happen, then it won't. But as somebody, I guess, once did say, and it's to be proactive, not reactive all the time, but also at the time, maybe we got to take a look at something new, and that's where we'll back up again and then cut this off here for now, is that this was, part of that discussion was what this could look like as a new entrance into the city for what people were coming into promoting ourselves as that. And again, I think the presentation of what actually the development is to be looked like, and that's why I have to shut up and let them and Adam and then talk about what's going on.
Adam, did you want to speak to some generalities about B-two and why you allowed for approval, and then maybe Dave can address based on all the person Raome's concern about traffic load, and maybe just speak just briefly on those two items?
Yeah. And this is a problem, I guess, that I see a lot of times when a developer comes forward and tells you an end product, especially in a situation like this where the question before the commission was not, was the multifamily appropriate on this location? That is not the question before the commission. The commission had two questions before it. Number one, was this annexation appropriate? In other words, is this property appropriate to be in the city versus in the town of Grand Rapids for development? So that's question number one. Number two, the question is, what is the most appropriate zoning for that location? And the question before them from the applicant was, is B-two the best zoning before, or for this property in this location? Looking at the comprehensive plan, you have a commercial shown as the appropriate use within your comprehensive plan. The most similar zoning district within your zoning ordinance is the B-two zoning district. So that is why, when the commission's looking at it, again, it's, they're looking at the question, is that zoning appropriate in that location? Not the actual potential end use, because it is still a potential end use, there's no guarantee that the multifamily would even end up locating there. So all things being considered, all uses being considered, what is the appropriate zoning? And again, going back to your comprehensive plan, B-two is the most similar district to what is shown on your plan. So that is what, I guess, I wasn't at the commission meeting, but I'm, a lot of what's in the report is from my report, and that is why it was recommended approval from staff, because if I was to pick a zoning district that would match, it would be B-two. So I just want to kind of clarify that and make sure that's very clear. So I guess I was a little upset that you say the commission failed. You know, the commission had a clear job before it, and in my opinion, they did that. As far as what's allowed in the B-two district, just a brief overview, I mean, it's a wide range of uses. It's everything you see on Eighth Street, but yes, it does also include multifamily as a permitted use. So if that zoning district is approved there and anywhere else on Eighth Street, someone can pull a permit for multifamily anywhere on Eighth Street as it sits right now. If someone wanted to buy the Brastrom Kicker building, tear it down, they could put up as many multifamily units would fit there. That's a risk you run with the way your zoning ordinance is created. So I just kind of want to get that out there. I'll let Dave talk to traffic, because he's probably a little bit more experienced on that than I am.
The city had a request a couple of years ago for, to look at a traffic signal at Witrock and Eighth Street. At this point, it doesn't meet warrants, but it is in our overall traffic system. It's on a forty-lined street, so the spacing is right between Two Mile and Coon Avenue for a future traffic signal. So right now, it doesn't warrant it. I don't believe this particular development will bring us to that level, but if it does, then we could look at a traffic signal that would fit into our system to handle the traffic.
Thank you. Tom, were you asking the developer to speak to the request, or I can call on all the person Nash to, if he's got questions for the developer as well?
No, I, I think Adam, because the way I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Adam just explained it, but I mean, the original, they want an annex, and we've been through this before, you annex, it comes in as R-one or two, and, which is one or two-family residential district. And once you do that, I mean, then it has to be changed there. You need to have a change there in order to make it, so you can make it commercial. And then, yeah, then that's where you run into the problem with, you can have whatever. I, you know, I guess Adam explained it anyway, but I mean, I just wanted to, you know, that's common way, you know, I mean, there's three steps, and the last step, which is five for the development, who's to say that's actually going to happen? I mean, there's a lot of hoops and stuff to jump through before, before that happens. The sewer and water isn't even there, so I guess, I don't, I don't have a problem with what we're doing here.
And I'm glad you pointed out the clarification, because, yes, and I was going to ask Adam to talk about the process in the grand scheme of things. So it goes from here for the annexation, what Bob just illustrated, but then there's also the site plan, which we haven't seen. We have a proposed use, which I think the developer, then it's natural for us to maybe have the developer come up and speak to that. That isn't what's in front of us tonight, that will come back at a subsequent meeting. Adam, can you speak to that process, just so everyone's aware of what that, that looks like?
Well, I guess normally speaking for B-two district, if someone was proposing something that's commercial or multifamily, being that it's a permitted use, there would not be a site plan review, meaning they could go straight to a building permit. However, based on this particular property, because of its location near Two Mile Creek and falling under the shoreline zoning ordinance of the county, there is a requirement for them to come back through with a site plan, meaning that it would have to go through the planning commission and before the council again for that formal approval of the actual project itself. So that's, again, that separation of what is proposed tonight is a concept, and what would come back in the future would be actually what they're looking to build.
Okay, sure. Michael, did you want to come and use the slides? Shane can get those teed up for you, I guess you wanted to demonstrate those.
I actually have a couple on the flash screen. Well, thank you for considering us tonight and taking the time to have us on the agenda. Let me see if I can figure out how to get out of the... Okay, so first, I just want to tell everyone a little bit about our company. I'm sure most are not familiar with us, I don't know if anyone did some research. Company's name is Miller Valentine Group. We're based out of Cincinnati, Ohio, and we have property that we own and manage in eighteen states, and we have roughly thirteen thousand units. Our portfolio is consistently between ninety-four and ninety-six percent occupied. We just had to recently actually go through that for some asset management reporting, and we're ninety-five point seven right now. We are not in Wisconsin, we're new to Wisconsin, however, we kind of surround the state a little bit. We're in Michigan, we're in Iowa, we're in Illinois. Obviously, multifamily's a big piece of what we do. We pride ourselves on our ownership, this is our fiftieth year in business. We own about two hundred properties, and I think we've only sold about three in our time. So I just want to say that as, a lot of developers, you know, the question is, are you kind of build and sell and get out? We absolutely would be owning this as a long-term owner. Under no situation would we sell it in less than a fifteen-year timeframe, and I can't promise how long, but I know it's at least that long. First thing, I just want to show you a little of the project. This is what the building looks like. It's built to Wisconsin Green built standards, three-story buildings. There is a clubhouse on site, fitness center, computer room, onsite management, onsite maintenance. The big difference you see here is, if you look in the middle of this building, there is an open stairwell. This was, this picture here is from a photo of a property that we built in Tennessee. Obviously, the weather's a lot different, so that would be enclosed. But other than that, this, this is the building that we are proposing here. The investment rough cost that we are estimating currently is eight million dollars, so it's roughly about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit is the total cost. And then I'll try to, well, let me get to the site plan here. I'm sorry. Here is our current concept site plan. Obviously, that's not final, and we need to come back and get input and review it. And particularly, we're looking into some of the concerns. Shoreland zoning may make us switch a little bit. If you look to the kind of, I guess that's northwest corner, the top left corner of the screen there, you'll see that's kind of where the watershed comes through, and you can see the green kind of underneath our site layout there. So we need to make sure with shoreline zoning that we are far enough away from that, and it's something that we're aware of and taking into consideration. One of the comments made was regarding sewer laterals, sidewalks, and the like. That's all things that would be part of our plan and things that we will pay to construct, so that won't be a cost for the city at all. We would pull fire hydrants and everything else, anything that's required would be on us to construct. Want to speak a little bit about the zoning specifically. Obviously, annexation is sort of a must for development here just because of the sewer and water issue. Regarding zoning, specifically, we're looking at B-two as was discussed here, because we do think it's the right zoning for the area, and should our project fall through, which can happen, I mean, that absolutely does happen sometimes, that's the zone I would happen sometimes, that's the zone I would expect the city would want to see, assuming you would annex it in. That's the most natural zone and that's from discussions with Adam and also just kind of looking at land use there. Our project is based on WITA tax credits. The timing of all that puts us into a competitive situation for funding, which we'll know probably in May if it's going to go forward. If we start construction, you would see construction starting around this time next year. It would sort of be a race to beat the weather. If it gets too cold, it adds a lot of cost. If not, it could push to the spring, but the goal would be to start in October or November of next year. It is roughly one-year construction time period. We serve as the general contractor, but we hire all subcontractors locally. The estimate is that it creates roughly 75 jobs during the construction period. Again, we will advertise locally as long as the trades are available and willing to work here, we will hire them all locally here. We do not bring them with us. Traffic, one thing I would like to say about traffic, and it's not that I have all the traffic studies for A Street, but I will say that I don't believe a multifamily property of this level of density, this many units, would necessarily create more traffic than a majority of commercial establishments. Now, it depends on the commercial establishment, obviously, but things like restaurants and/or storefronts would likely create a lot more traffic than this would. The other thing to consider is multifamily serves as a good buffer. You think about the single-family homes to the back behind it, you know, if you have a lot of commercial activity, there's a lot more kind of in and out and deliveries come in and it's just, it serves kind of naturally from a land planning basis as kind of a buffer to the neighborhood behind it from what could potentially go there. Obviously not as compared to empty land and, you know, forests there now and the like. And the other thing is, when you're considering future development along the corridor, multifamily and having 56 units in that area spurs future development. There's residents right in the area that now all of a sudden are going to be eating at establishments there, maybe working at places right there, you know, doing their grocery shopping and the like. So business and retail generally follows rooftops is kind of what we like to say. So a lot of our properties actually are on main corridors or just off of main corridors and we find that to be pretty helpful. The other thing I'd like to say is kind of how we found Wisconsin Rapids. We started with a statewide market study of state of Wisconsin and places that may make sense. Our history has been to be in some of the more medium-sized towns. We don't necessarily go into the Milwaukies of the world. So that was kind of a first filter for us. But then we start looking and this came up as a place that quite honestly, we see a need. Couple of things I want to point out that came back from what we studied. 65% of all rental housing in the city was built before 1980 and only 8% of it has been built since 2000. So there's a pretty strong aging stock of rental housing here and a lot of residents may not have the option for kind of state-of-the-art, new newly constructed, modern amenity apartments in town and we think this could serve a need that's currently missing. I don't know that I covered everything, but try not to take all the time and hopefully that gives you a good overview of who we are and kind of the project that we are proposing here. And I'm obviously, any questions, happy to answer.
All the person's stack.
Thank you, Your Honor. What's the demographic you're looking at and what is the, what type, one, two-bedroom, three-bedroom condo?
Working families is our target. We will rent based on the tax credits we are sourcing. We will be able to rent to people who make up to $42,120 and there is a cutoff based on that. Currently, it's designed as 50% three-bedroom, 50% two-bedroom. It may change, but if it changes, you're going to 60/40 or something. It's going to be in that ballpark. It may change based on final site design as we look at building footprints and the like with shoreland zoning. Our two-bedroom, and this was asset planning commission, so I apologize, I didn't point this out early, but our two-bedroom units are 908 square feet. Our three-bedroom units are 1,022 square feet.
And rental rates?
Rental rates, we are allowed to rent up to $817 for a two-bedroom, $944 for a three-bedroom. Obviously, market determines it, but that's the most we're allowed to charge.
Okay. Thank you.
All the person, is there any other questions? All the person, hold camp.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before you were talking about the bypass, thinking it was going to be 10, 15 years from now. They're still working on that down at the state. Maybe if the city was more involved in the bypass, we could get a little bit more help from this, you know? The county needs the city's help too for that bypass, so we shouldn't give up on it. We've been still working on that bypass and I don't think it's that far down the road. Thank you.
All the persons, any other discussion? All the person Nash?
Yeah, just a comment to kind of, thank you for the presentation and, you know, this is a project, a development project that's in item number five and we held out three, four and five. And just, you know, we're going to have to vote on these separately, I believe.
Right. The zoning is probably through the annexation first and then...
Right. And then we would go to five, which before...
Actually, three and four are just the public hearing and then the recommendation. Eight A and eight B is actually, would be the annexation ordinance.
Okay.
So I would suggest go eight A, eight B and then five.
I'm looking at the minutes.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Okay, I understand now. All right. Yeah, well, we're talking about the report though, so we don't have to do anything with the report. We're just talking about the report.
You have to take action on the zoning recommendation from the report. However, that, the annexation should happen first, so you, I would recommend that you jump down to the annexation, which is in eight A and eight B, and then go back to item five and planning.
Okay, 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 okay. I got you now. Yeah, okay.
That was all.
Well, I want to do that, but he wants to say something. Well, no, I would just make a motion to approve...
We, what we do have, Shane's got is a motion to approve three, four and five as presented. Motion by Ray O'm, seconded by yourself, to approve three, four and five as presented. However, at the attorney's request, we would, so maybe rescinding that motion might make sense and then we can act on a motion you may want to make?
Because we're just, that's just pertaining with the minutes and we actually have an agenda, item two agenda.
Subsequently, yeah.
We need to deal with, so.
Correct.
So if Tom rescinds his motion, we can move along, right?
Right. All right.
And I'll rescind the second.
All right. Motion and the second have been rescinded. The floor is yours.
So I can move along?
Yes.
So I would make a motion to approve item eight A at this time. And B, okay, A and B at this time on our council agenda.
So we have a motion, we'll wait for a second, then I'll have the attorney pipe in. Is there a second down there? Motion to approve items eight and B. I'm going to push your button, Scott, please, for Shane's records up here. Thank you. All right. Attorney Schill?
Okay, because this is a direct annexation, it requires a two-thirds vote of the membership and so that means no matter how many people are here, we have an absent member, we would, you'd need six votes to annex the property. Just wanted everyone to be clear on that.
Just to annex?
Correct. Any further, all the person Kirkpatrick?
Just a question as the presentation was gone through. And this kind of, from what you had said, Adam. So anything that would, you know, let's just say that this thing goes through, annexation occurs, any project has to come back for approval. So no project can go forward, no earth can be turned without an approval from the commission and the council. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that is tied to the floodplain, or not floodplain, sorry, the shoreland zoning ordinance of the county that has jurisdiction because of its location.
Because of the creek.
But again, somewhere else on A Street, that would be zone B2, would not normally have to do that.
Right. Okay. So, and what I heard and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, was that your development group, this is what you guys do is multifamily residential units and that you do not sell your properties. So if annexation goes through and the proposal plans in time, you know, six months or whatever, if those would not go through, what is, what do you guys do and what does that leave us? What position does that put us in?
Please, I don't know if the question makes, I mean, I let you advise it, they don't own it, but...
That's all I was going to say. We don't own the property. So our purchase of the property is tied to our funding of the proposal.
So if any project plans would not go through or go to fruition, then you guys are out entirely?
We, correct. We do not own the property. We purchased the property essentially upon construction start, but our, we, with 99% accuracy, know that we have funding and we're moving forward in May. And then the construction started six months later. During that six months is when we're getting final site plan approval, engineering drawings, all the like, meeting with fire marshal, et cetera.
Okay. And if those, does that, does all of that stuff there, the site plans and stuff like that, does that come back here before it's finalized or by the time that they're already going into that, that stage of the development, is it already past council and it's not?
It would come back to council before that May date where he's saying you would have 99% sure that you've got funding and you're moving forward. So that would be prior to that. Assuming, let's say you approve the annexation and the zoning tonight, for whatever reason, funding falls through or a site plan doesn't get approved, then basically what the city is left with is property that is annexed into the city and is zone B2 and is ready for development is basically what would be left.
Okay.
I think that was your original question of what happens if basically if they walk over.
Essentially, yeah. Yeah, essentially, yes. And I, you know, and I guess personally, I'm fine with the idea of the annexation. I'm fine with the idea of the zoning. It's just, you know, we've, what's presented to me here tonight is that, the zoning and that nature, and then essentially a proposal for a residential structure. That's what I'm, that's what I'm viewing and that's the way that I'm voting is reading, reading all of that information compiled together. So that's where my vote will come from tonight.
All the person Nash?
Well, worst-case scenario, we end up with property that's annexed into the city and is ready for commercial development.
That's exactly right.
Whether this is approved or not, it's something commercial can come in, whether it's a hotel.
That's exactly right. Mm-hmm. You're correct. Any further discussion, all the persons? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. The motion is to approve item eight and B, eight A and B. Please cast your ballots. Oh, I'm sorry. Shane's going to have to, Shane can see it.
I'm sorry. I'm like, what's going on? There you go.
He wants to see it. There we go. He can see it now.
All right. Motion defeated five As and two Nays.
Okay. We'll move into, as a reminder, the city's, city attorneys note that we will require six of the members to vote in favor, not of those present, present here, two-thirds. So we move back to item seven on the report, which is seven, let's see, item seven and I guess...
Three, four and five.
Three, four and five, which since the annexation was denied, we would now, right, I mean, what action would be?
Right, we can't rezone property that's not in the...
Right, so I mean, so there's no action on that, right. So, all right, so do we have to, we've already approved the planning commissioner, the balance of the report, so no further action. All right, we're set. Thank you. Item nine, under new business, item A is the appointment of two citizen members and one city member, employee member to the ethics board?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Just maybe an explanation to clarify to the people in the audience here of where we are, of what just took place and...
We didn't do anything.
I know, but just so they're...
Okay.
So they're, I understand, Bob, just so they're all clear.
Mm-hmm. So the annexation to the city was denied and so therefore no subsequent development can occur without a re-annexation request, a second request to the planning commission and to the subsequent, to the council subsequently. Correct.
I think farther than that, you have a developer here that was sitting here and made a presentation. You just told him to hit the road, Jack.
I think that pretty much spells it out. Okay. Is that, Tom, did you have any other comments? Okay. All the person's stack.
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing too, that I see taking place tonight is we're putting a stick in somebody's eye who wants to do something for the city. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? All the person Kirkpatrick, last one, then we got to move on.
Thank you. I don't personally feel like my vote came out of sticking it to somebody or telling somebody, no, hit the road. I feel it was, for me, it was, this is not the right place for what I had presented to me. So annexation in general commercial terms, fine. This, you know, the proposed development project as was presented in here, fine. It's just, to me, those two items are mutually exclusive events.
Item nine, under new business, item A, the appointment of two citizen members and one city employee member to the ethics board. Council members, we've got, let's see, we've got an attachment, doesn't say attachment number. I guess we've got two letters of interest. One second here, we've got... Two employee and two citizen letters, so we've got, of the two employee, we've got two, which, two slots and one city. The way I'm reading that, is that correct? Mr. Clerk?
We have one opening for the city, we have one opening for the city, we need to choose one.
Okay. So one of each pile, upon further clarification. Do we have members that presented here that would like to come and address the body? Anybody? Nick is back there, I see Nick behind the podium. Nick, would you like to come forward? Come on, one second.
Yes, I was on. I won't take a whole lot of your time. I thank you for your consideration for my service on the ethics board here with the city of Wisconsin Rapids as an employee member. I think a lot of what the ethics board values aligns with what my personal and professional beliefs are. Personal beliefs aside, I do have professional background in ethics, both from my business background in corporate ethics and the business ethics, but also with my law background. I am an attorney in good standing here in Wisconsin and in being so, I have to uphold the rules of professional responsibility. So I think those all align with what the ethics board looks to uphold. So I won't take a whole lot of your time, but thank you for your consideration.
And then the second member or second individual that's wishing to seek the position is Mr. Eric Daven and his letter is also attached. Letter and, cover letter and resume, it looks like, for both of those individuals. And then anybody from the citizens? Nope, Shane is not seeing if anybody's back there. Please raise your hand. Mr. Teaslink or Mr. Zappin, it looks like. Council members, what are your wishes?
Robert.
Robert, do you want to come forward? Thank you. Introduce yourself, please. It's hard to see sometimes, even with young eyes, it's hard to see back there. Go ahead.
Excuse me. My name is Robert Teaslink and I've worked in Renaissance Learning for 15 years and I've been looking for a way to get more involved with my community and this one looked like a very interesting area that I've always been interested in. I graduated with a minor in ethics from the University of Northern Iowa, so this is something that has always interested me and as long, as well as the city politics side of it.
Thank you. Any questions, council members? Well, thank you for your interest and for being here tonight, most importantly. Council members, what are your wishes regarding item nine A? We've got one of each, one of each pile or packet to select from. All the person Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I just want to make it known here, Jean obviously couldn't be here tonight, but she
I just want to make it known here, Jean obviously couldn't be here tonight, but she had expressed an interest in nomination for Ed Zappin. On the same token, I'd like to make a nomination for all four of the letters of interest here this evening.
There's a motion to nominate all four for consideration? Is there a second? We don't have a second then, right? Just nominations. Thank you. Okay. They've all been nominated. What are your wishes, council members? Okay, we'll take the citizen member first. He didn't bring, Shane didn't bring some, we've got two and Shane said we need one of each. Shane, that's the way I read it too, that we need two. Shane, is that not correct, the way the agenda's been noticed? For two, for two and for one, so you've got, on your cover Shane, it says for, okay, okay. So, all right, both of the individuals have been nominated, so in which case we'll entertain a vote. All in favor of approving the two members who wish, or two individuals who wish to be considered to be on the city's ethics board? All signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. They've been approved. Shane, do you have any pieces of paper or anything for us for the employee member? I've got business cards, you could use the back of those too. The chief's got some stuff here. All right. No, they've got flowers on them? Perfect. Okay. So the first name of the individual and district, if you can, for the employee member to the ethics board. Nick and Eric.
All ballots have been casted and we have four votes for Eric Daven and three votes for Nick Flanagan.
Okay. Nick, thanks for your interest. Next item on the agenda is item B, the appointments to the city's election board. See attachment number three, item B. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Next agenda item is item 10, standing council committee reports, item A, finance and property, held December 3rd.
Thank you. Finance and property met December 3rd, one report here this evening. We met at 5:00 PM Tuesday, December 3rd, first floor conference room. All members were present. List of those attending is on file with the clerk. Item number one, meeting was called to order. Item number two, there was no special beer applications. Item three was an application for a Class A liquor and beer license filed by Merlin Jeffrey, DBA Quality Foods IGA for the premises located at 1021 West Grand Avenue. Motion and a second to approve that request, license and premise, and that motion carried. Item number four, renewal for applications for A, a secondhand article dealer license filed by Eco ATM Incorporated, 555 West Grand Avenue, is moved and seconded to approve the license, that motion carried. Item B, a pawnbroker secondhand article dealer and secondhand jewelry dealer license filed by Eway Sales LLC, 3511 Eighth Street South, moved and seconded to approve the license, that motion carried. Item five, a special events application filed by the Southwood County Humane Society for their super snow sculpture spectacular on January 25th from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM to include vending and use of the parking lot and grounds of the Centralia Center and the River Walk. It is moved and seconded to approve the application, including the vending and use of the parking lots and grounds of the Centralia Center and the River Walk. Item six was a request from Jim Borski to review quotes for two one and a half ton pickup trucks for the DPW. It was moved and seconded to accept Rapids Ford as the low bidder, the qualified low bidder with trade-ins for the amount $43,000, or $43,070. That motion carried. See attachment one. Item number seven was a request from Fire Chief Dave Kirkman for permission to apply for a 2013 assistance to firefighter grant through FEMA. It was moved and seconded to approve applying for that grant and that motion carried. And I wish he could have stuck around a little bit longer, but I believe that Tim can answer any questions there as well. Item number eight, a request from the municipal court judge Peter Kastenholtz that municipal court fees be adjusted to reflect any increases as may be allowed by state law. It is moved and seconded to approve increasing the municipal court fees to be increased by $10 and that motion carried. Just real fast, that was a little bit different than what was presented to the committee, but we felt that it was fine to continue to review these as they came forward and since it happened about every 10 years. Item number nine was a request for $20,000, or $20,715.60 from the city of Wisconsin Rapids to help support the regional economic growth initiative, also known as REGI. That's attachment number two in your packets. It was moved and seconded to approve that request for $20,715.60 for the REGI initiative and that motion carried. Item number 10, beverage operator license applications, A, it was moved and seconded to approve new license for the individual listed, motion carried. Item B, it was moved and seconded to renew the license for the individual listed, that motion carried. Item C, there were no applications recommended, denied by the police department. Item 11 was audit of bills. It was moved and seconded to approve payment for vouchers numbering 53065 through number 53381 and that motion carried. Item number 12, it was moved and seconded to adjourn, our meeting adjourned at 6:05 PM. Andrew Kirkpatrick, secretary. With that, I move for adoption of these minutes as presented.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. All the person Nash?
Thank you. Just on item number three, is that just a change in the license description or is they, where they lapsed in their...
Yeah, actually, it was the business was sold. Or actually, yeah, the business was sold and it's not actually in his name. It's going to be the same entity with new officers. That was kind of clarified after the meeting, so it's a new owner of the business.
Further discussion, all the person Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. Real quick, if, Tim, if you could talk a little bit about item number seven, and that was the request for that firefighter grant. Unfortunately, there's not an attachment here, but city contribution and what that was going to be used for, if you've got that information in front of you?
Yeah, the fire department has applied for these capital grants in the past and what it is, is they apply to FEMA for, for equipment. I think some of the past things that they've gotten through this grant process is they got a turnout gear dryer, they installed an exhaust system in the garage, in the garage of the fire department through this grant and basically it's a 95 through FEMA and our 5% city match. I'm not sure exactly what, I can't remember offhand what...
I believe it's, he called it S, was SBA or SCA?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Basically, I believe it's your respiration equipment, which was on, he said, an 18-year depreciation fund and would have earned...
Yeah, they have a replacement schedule for these that they have to replace every so often.
Not 18 years, but it would have been 2018 before these would have been scheduled to be replaced. So we're kind of getting, if we'd be approved for this, we'd be getting ahead of that curve a little bit at a very good rate for the city.
Further discussion? We've got all the person Stack, go ahead.
Just hold out nine for a separate vote, please.
Thank you. Item nine has been held out. Any other discussion? So it'd be the balance of the report with the exception of item nine, which is a request to support the REGI initiative. All right. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero Nays.
So item nine is a request for $20,000, $20,715.60 from the city of Wisconsin Rapids to help the regional economic, to support the regional economic growth initiative. We've got members from REGI that are here this evening. If you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourselves, if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak to the request, otherwise make yourself available to council members if council members have specific questions for them. Council members, any discussion? All the person Stack?
How many communities are going in on this funding and what is your, what is your pay plan? Benefits going forward? How, how would you meet the expense of someone like this? Who are you looking for to be that initial person? You know, go ahead, please.
I want to make sure the mic is pushed, the green lights on the mic base.
Is it on now? Thank you. Mr. Stack, thank you for your questions. The first one was, I'm sorry, I was coming up to the front.
How are you going to, who are, who are you looking to hire? You're, you'll have so many dollars from how many groups?
Yeah, the municipalities that have contributed thus far have been the Wood County Board for $30,500. Grand Rapids is about $7,900 in their contribution. Nacusa is about $1,900 in their contribution and Port Edwards is about $2,100 in their contribution. And Pittsville is participating as well. They participated and their cost is $250 and it's based on equalized value. And that was determined by a group of subcommittee members of REGI that made a determination, Adam, Jason, Tim DeSorcey had some input on it as well, and that's how those dollars were, were factored in. We're asking for the fair share, if you will, for the city to participate in this. Now, in terms of your other questions that you had, REGI has been working for a little over two years to put this plan together. The questions that you are asking is we have about a six-month timeline now where we would like to get started and do a recruiting search on finding someone who has the skill sets necessary for this position. Right now, Encourage Community Foundation, which has obviously, and I don't want to bore you with all the facts associated with what we talked about on the first time we presented, but Encourage has a $200,000 match grant on this for right now and that doesn't include the monies that we've put in to the study to get us to this point through Future Works. So Encourage is the, going to be the employee of record until we can restructure REGI and then that person who we hire will be answering to the committee structure as we've redesigned it. And that person will be reporting and there'll be connections, obviously, to all the municipalities up and down Southwood County as well. We still have presentations to make with Rome and several other of the local municipalities to find out what their status is, but obviously we believe this is a regional approach and we also believe that we intentionally came to Wisconsin Rapids after we had some inertia and some positive momentum with the other municipalities that we've been working with.
All right. And, okay, so you have a, you have a foundation, you have a support, $200,000, you said. Where do you receive revenue to pay for this after a certain time? Or to me, you know, the person would look for benefits, so on and so forth. Do you keep coming back to the communities? Is that what you're, you're anticipating?
Well, we...
You seem to have, you seem to have a position and you're asking the communities at this time to provide a portion of the funding. For example, what you gave me right now adds up to about $62,000.
And we have strategies in place in which we're talking about right now and which we are going to make a community-wide approach, including businesses and other areas of our community for donations to support this. Again, this is a regional approach that's going to involve our entire community if we're going to turn around economic development. It's going to be the regional approach that's going to make it. And this plan in communities where it's been done has found that there has been a flip really in the support systems for it because you've got a regional approach to it and people are supporting it because they see the benefits of it. But it's an entirely different way of looking at economic development. Future Works Plan, as I mentioned to you last time we've talked about, is unique in the sense that we've spent two and a half years talking about what it is that we can do to turn our economy in the right direction. And it's talking about providing leverage on our assets and working together and coming together around these assets of which manufacturing and food processing is a part of it. And so that's what we hope is going to ignite some economic development and we're going to hopefully be able to produce some examples of that over the next several months, but we need to get started on this.
Is the $20,000 needed at this time to go forward with your recruitment?
Yeah, and I think it is. I think it's very important because I think we need to demonstrate a regional collaborative, collective approach to this. And when we have communities like Pittsville understanding it and Nacusa understanding it, working together, I think we need to step forward and be unified in Southwood County because that is what's going to get it done. We know that if we don't work together, it's going to be very, very difficult, if not impossible. The regional approach also makes us more connected to the region in general and hopefully through the state as well as the Midwest. We have a site plan here that was just approved several weeks ago that, that we are one of 13 communities that's positioned. We need an economic developer to rally our assets together and work together and represent Southwood County, not just Wisconsin Rapids.
This isn't something that could be done first on your own and then you come back and show us the fruits of your labor?
No, because I, because I really think that, I really think our community needs to have our leaders step up and be working together with us through economic development. Economic development is not just on your shoulders, it's on everybody's shoulders. We've got Encourage Community Foundation and other businesses that we're going to hopefully get together with and this is going to be a unified front. And I think it's really critical that the city plays.
Thank you.
And I would add too, as a member of REGI, all the person Stack and other council members too, I think this is really truly an opportunity for us to think differently about how we approach economic development. Historically, through the room tax allocation, we provided to the Chamber of Commerce a significant amount of funds, about twice the amount, about $70,000 annually to support economic development efforts. So this is about half of what we historically contributed for economic development through room tax allocation. Prior to that change, and that was actually prior to your coming on the council again most recently, was for us to think differently. And the REGI initiative, as a member of REGI, it's something that I think as a municipal leader, that us as municipal leaders as well, as elected, have the opportunity to tell the greater Wisconsin Rapids area and the Southwood, Southernwood County area that this is an opportunity for us to partner with our regional municipals. Frankly, most of the activity would happen in the city, right? I mean, we saw a development potential, an opportunity that unfortunately didn't get passed, but would have only happened because they had to be in the city. And so frankly, most of the development, there's a few, there's only a few alternatives where that development could happen. So this is truly an opportunity for us to further our work. You know, Gus alluded to the certified sites designation, really allows us to further our work to get that site noticed, but also to develop further sectors of our economy beyond manufacturing and others. But Gus, do you want to add to that?
Mayor Verwick and the council, I'd like to just have Jeff Burton say a couple of words as well. As I've mentioned to you, REGI has been working for almost two and a half years now and there are 18 people on it. Jeff Burton is the CEO for Urkel and he's been a very, very integral part along with Melissa Loken from the chamber, as well as Jennifer Rickenbach and Kelly Lucas in the, in the audiences and Rick Merton. So Jeff has got...
So Jeff has got some insights as well that might be helpful in clarifying some of the questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. As Gus said, we've been working on this for about two and a half years. And speaking to the survey that was done, the Future Works Survey, we did put skin in the game. We already spent money as the funders group through the Encourage Community Foundation to do the survey. And now we want to act on the activities that we see are required from the survey. As the mayor said, you know, the bulk of what happens in Southwood County, if it's not going to land here in Wisconsin Rapids, it's going to have a positive impact on Wisconsin Rapids through the businesses done. It's not unlike the company that I work for that resides in Port Edwards, yet Wisconsin Rapids, I think, shares a lot of the expenses that our company spends. The point that I want to make is that we are, we are also, on an annual basis, going out and asking for business to put skin in the game. So the Chamber is going out for $10,000 from our small business members to be able to support this. And the remaining $65,000, we would look to businesses like Urco and other large companies in the area or companies that have foundations that support the area, like the large, you know, the utilities that are in the area. So I strongly encourage you to take part in this because it is a part of our long-term future. And to be clear, yes, we will come back and we will ask you to support us again next year. This is a long-term scenario that we all have to be part of because it has to be sustained. So if there's no other questions, I will turn it back over.
What's been the response from the small business area? Who have you contacted? Who would be representative of that small business that you've contacted that say, yes, I'd like to continue with this?
Well, we, the Chamber, I am also the secretary on the Chamber of Commerce locally, and we, the Chamber, have had that discussion at our most recent meeting, and we will be rolling it out at our annual meeting in January to be able to approach all of our members at that point in time. So this ask is happening on all fronts. We're spreading this out. And we're going to large business at the same time, and that will likely happen in January and February of '14.
So you haven't spoken with any of the small businesses, if they're on or not?
No, we haven't, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Please.
Currently, the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce solicits academic development funding from our members. Our members contribute somewhere in the neighborhood of $7,000 to $8,000 per year for economic development. In the past, we've directed those dollars towards marketing, towards business retention and expansion, business startup, things of that nature. We, along, me, along with my board, have made the commitment this year that those dollars will be allocated to Regi. And we are going to look beyond our membership to, of small businesses to support the efforts of Regi with our goal in mind of being $10,000. One of the questions, too, that I'd just like to address that came up at one of the last meetings was duplication of services. Doesn't the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce do this or do that or whatever the case may be? As the mayor alluded to, we did receive quite a bit of funding in past years to do a lot more in the area of economic development. We've had to narrow down and really focus on what we're good at, at the Chamber of Commerce. And that's connecting businesses to businesses that results in sales. So sales of our members that participate in our leads group have been well over a half million dollars this year. We're also very strong in business retention and expansion in leading those efforts. We championed an effort to get further training for our members of our team to be able to start to develop an economic gardening program. And we're also very good at small business startup. This position that we're looking to recruit really coordinates economic development in the community. It serves as outreach and connections beyond what we have locally and can provide impact far greater for all of the players that work together if we're, if we're all coordinated under some person that has the skills, charisma. We're really, we're looking for some, someone that hasn't been seen before. We're not looking for a traditional economic developer, and we're not looking in the traditional places. So this is a whole new opportunity for the greater Wisconsin Rapids area and all of our partners involved in Regi. And I encourage you all to support it wholeheartedly. All of the partners in this are very much vested in the success of this effort, and you won't see a more dedicated group of people to economic development than the people of Regi.
Thank you. Alderperson Stack, any further questions?
Just a comment. I think I'll have to reserve my vote this year. See what they show at next year's. Thank you.
Further discussion, council members? Did you want to speak?
Just move for adoption of item number nine as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Chad, you want to push your button, please, for Shane? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six As and one Ne.
Thank you, members of Regi, for being here this evening and for your time to present to the council.
On behalf of Regi, thank you very much for your support. Appreciate that.
Move into the next item on our agenda, item 10B. Public Works Committee meeting held December 3rd. Alderperson, R.
Thank you, your honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:09 PM on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013, in the first-floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Dave Lastben, Joe Aikstad. A list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item one was call the meeting to order. Item two, a request from Ahmed Musalem, 7620, Warren Drive, representing Rapids Area Soccer to waive both the $250 erosion control permit fee and the $50 excavating fee for the new soccer fields by the Washington School that they are developing. Ahmed represented Rapids Area Soccer, was present for this item. There was a motion and a second to waive the fees, and the motion carried. Item three was a request from Steve Clavine, 4311 White Pine Circle, to vacate Clavine Avenue between 14th Place South and 15th Place South. Steve was present for the item. He's proposing to change Clavine Avenue between 14th Place South and 15th Place South to a cul-de-sac west of 15th Place. There was a motion and a second to recommend the vacation of Clavine Avenue between 14th Place South and 15th Place South and adopt the resolution. Motion carried, and that resolution is contained in our packet of minutes. Item four was a request from Dave Ramsden of Ramsden Construction, 6640 State Highway 13 South, to change the maximum driveway width allowed for duplexes from 36 feet to 40 feet. There was no one present for the item. There was a motion and a second to recommend revising the maximum driveway width allowed for duplexes from 36 to 40 feet, only if both driveways into the duplex are adjacent to each other on the same street. The motion carried, and that ordinance is attached. Item five was a request from Alderperson Kellogg to patch the alley between Mead Street, Third Street South, Elm Street, and Sherman Street, and remove the tree adjacent to the alley to maintain the alley until it can be reconstructed. There was a motion and a second to remove the tree and to patch the alley, and that motion carried. Item six was to review the proposed 2014 public works schedule. The committee reviewed the schedule. Item seven was to review the referral list. The committee removed item nine, B, 14 and 15 of 2013 from their list. Item eight, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, the meeting adjourned, and with the meeting adjourned at 6:47 PM. With that, your honor, I'd move for adoption of the committee report.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero Ns.
Final item underneath, item 10. Item C, Human Resources Committee, Mel, meeting held December 9th and December 10th. Alderperson Nash.
Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM on Monday, December 9th, 2013. All members were present. Item one, the meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item two, A, motion and a second to go into closed session. Motion passed unanimously. B, in closed session, the committee discussed compensation for a union police sergeant promoted to a non-union police lieutenant. Item C, or C and under item number two, was a motion and a second to return to open session. Motion passed unanimously. There was a motion and a second to place the promoted employee in a pay progression to grade 13, step 9, and to place future promotions to police lieutenant in the pay progression of grade 13, step 9. This is the same grade and step as all current police lieutenants, and motion carried. Item three, motion and a second to go into closed session again. Motion passed unanimously. In closed session, the committee discussed bargaining strategy. The committee continued in closed session and conducted base wage negotiations with the ASME group. There was a motion and a second to return to open session. Motion passed, and no action was taken. Item four, the committee considered a request to change a portion of the HR assistance 2013 compensation to the health plan due to a significant amount of work being dedicated to the health plan administration and related health plan design changes. Motion and a second to approve allocating 155.5 hours of the human resources assistance compensation to the health plan fund for the year 2013. That motion carried. Item number five, there was a motion and a second to approve the proposed 2014 Health and Wellness Operating Plan. The motion carried. That's attachment number one of these minutes. And the, item number six, the meeting adjourned at 5:36 PM. We also had another report. Human Resources Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, December 10th. All members were present except for Alderperson Rurle, who was excused. Item one, the meeting was called to order at 4:31 PM. Item two, discuss and approve new job classifications and wage rates for DTW employees. Motion was made and seconded to approve the request, and motion passed. It's attachment number one of these minutes. Item number three, a motion was made and seconded to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. Motion passed unanimously. In closed session, the committee discussed bargaining strategy. In closed session, committee conducted base wage negotiations with ASME and asset groups. The committee met with representatives of ASME and asset groups to conduct base wage negotiations. D, a motion was made and seconded to return to open session, and motion passed. Item number four, discuss and approve tentative labor agreements with ASME and asset. A motion was made and seconded to approve tentative labor agreements with ASME and asset. Motion passed. That's attachments two, three, and four. Item number five, discuss and approve an employee recognition, recognition increase for asset and clerical employees. Motion was made and seconded to approve a recognition rate increase in the amount of 0.34% of wages for all ASME clerical and asset employees and approve a lump sum award to the employees in the following ASME positions. Grade operator in the amount of $551.62. Street marking and meter maintenance in the amount of $594.05. And the current single axle truck driver in the park department, the amount of $275.81, and that motion passed. Item six, discuss and approve a wage increase for non-union employees. Motion was made and seconded to approve a 2% increase for all non-union employees, and that motion passed. Meeting adjourned at 4:47 PM, and I'll move for approval of both reports.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If we could get your button, please. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the two reports? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero Ns.
Item 11, under miscellaneous reports. Item A is the Housing Authority held October 30th. McMill Memorial Library Board of Trustees held October 16th and November 20th. Item C, the Police and Fire Commission held November 6th, December 3rd, and December 4th. Item D, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held December 4th. Item E, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Organizational Summary for November. Item F, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department's Monthly Report for November. Item G, the Water Works and Lighting Commission meeting held November 13th, their regular meeting, and November 13th, their special meeting. Item H, the Telecommunications Advisory Commission held October 23rd. And item I, the City Treasurers' Report on Investments for November.
Thank you. Motion, approve the miscellaneous reports and place them on file.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those reports?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On the Telecommunications Advisory Commission, item number three, A, the notes in there that is, the last sentence, it is recommended that the ordinance provide, provide that all franchise fee revenue be used to fund the budget of River Cities Community Access, except as monies are specifically appropriated from those revenues for other city needs by the common council. What are those identified needs?
At present, I defer to the city attorney, but my understanding at that Communications Advisory Committee, the council always has final approval of the funds, the franchise fees, franchise fee funds for any purposes they deem necessary.
Right. Actually, there's an ordinance that'll be coming back that will contain the dissolution of the commission and would probably contain that language. And I guess at that point, I think, I think the commission, some commissioners felt that that money should always be retained for telecommunications, but I think some commissioners also recognize that the revenues usually exceed the expenses of telecommunications budget and that the city in the past has used some of that money, and we would anticipate that in the future if there are certain needs. And we didn't identify those needs, but that was just the language that the commissioners came up with. But I, when the ordinance comes back, probably next month, I think that would probably be a good discussion to have of what, how you want the ordinance to read in terms of the disbursement of those monies.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the reports? Alderperson Patrick?
Just one thing real quick, coming out of the fire report, fire department report. It should be noted here that Chief Kirkman has, has made contacts here. He says this month also brought another major change within the department. On October 1st, he was contacted by Dan DeRoche, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, lead pastor, I'm sorry, oh, lead pastor from Woodlands Church, goes on to say that Dan is a former firefighter EMT and expressed interest in becoming our fire department chaplain. So it may seem kind of just something in passing to kind of, oh, hey, cool, look at that. But from my short time in, in the Army and from the, the things that I've heard from other service members, you know, military, police, fire, chaplains serve an important need, not just for the spiritual health of the individual members, but also just for the simple fact that you've got somebody else there to talk to if you've got a problem, be it within the department or of a personal nature. So I think that's a really welcome addition to our department, something that probably has been lacking. I don't know if, if Chief, you've got two? Excellent. Thank you.
And the fire chief did have to leave early for another commitment he had this evening, so unfortunately, he can't speak to it. Any further discussion on the reports? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero Ns.
Item 12, items for new business at the January 21st council meeting, which according to this, there is nothing. Item 13, under ordinances. Item A, an ordinance increasing the sewer fee, use fee as recommended by the Wastewater Treatment Commission at its December 4th meeting. See attachment number four. I've got a copy of the ordinance in front of me, which, I can read that. General Ordinance amending sections 8076A and 8076C, the Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Codes, entitled Sewer Regulation. The, this is for the charges levied on residential, industrial, commercial, institutional, and governmental users which discharge wastewater of strength equal or less than domestic wastewater will be billed at the rate of $5 per 1,000 gallons from $4.75, also equal to $3. will be billed at the rate of $5 per 1,000 gallons from $4.75, also equal to $3.74 or formerly $3.56 per 100 cubic feet. Minimum monthly charge shall be $13.80, formerly $13.15. Billing for usage or consumption shall commence after 748 gallons has been used and shall continue at the $5 per 1,000 gallon rate. The city reserves the right to impose higher minimum charges for commercial, industrial, governmental, and institutional users. The sewer charge for users discharging waste with BODs, TSS, TKN, or total phosphorus concentrations in excess of the values for domestic wastewater as defined in Section 801 of the ordinance shall be based on the schedule of the following costs as follows. Volume will be $5 per 1,000 gallon. A BOD surcharge would be a .680 from .648. Total suspended solids are TSS, Jim, I knew that number, knew that acronym, surcharge from .534 cents from .508. Total phosphorus surcharge, $5.898 from $5.617. And TKN surcharge, which I don't know, TKN, .194 or .185 per pound. Section 2 is all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with or hereby repealed. Section 3 is this ordinance shall take effect on January 1st, 2014. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that ordinance? We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If we could get the button, please? Not sure who that was, Alder Person Whirl. Discussion on that ordinance. Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five As and two Ns.
Item 14 is referral of communication to committees. We don't have anything in there. And being that this is our last meeting in December, I wish, wish to wish all employees, council members, those watching at home, those here this evening, safe and holiday, safe and enjoyable holiday season, and we'll see you next year in January. We're not going anywhere before then, but we'll see you next month in the council chambers. Thank you. And then I take a motion to adjourn?
The motion.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed, we stand adjourned.